Okay, thank you. All right. Here we go, Planning Board meeting on June, on June 20, June 9, 2001, calling to order at 6:39. Roll call attendance, Larry Gudrow.
Yeah.
Lindsey Butler is not here, Stephen Coswell is not here. Walt Meisner here, Richard Wright.
Here.
Here, and Associate Member Roger Hoyt.
Here.
Okay, notifications, agenda is to be, is as posted on the town website. It includes items reasonably anticipated by the chairman 48 hours prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken. Order and exact times of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion, except for public hearings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Documents submitted for review can be found under the Planning Board tab on the town website. That notice is particularly for those who are watching online and will be able to see, to see what is presented here on the table. The meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. If you are joining the meeting remotely, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. Those presenting to the board must have at least one representative present at the meeting, not remote, with hard copies of the application and the plans for the board to consider. Chairman comments. We are still under the state of emergency legislation. We are decided, we have the ability to September 1st to continue to have Zoom access to the meeting. We're trying or testing out a hybrid approach, and the hybrid approach is that people who from the public can come in, but when we're in town, we, the people who are in town and available, will be here at the meeting. But board members, summer hours, they're sometimes not in the same state like Richard is there. He's down in North Carolina, so he's able to join, which thank goodness gives us a quorum and makes it possible for us to have this meeting today. The, so anyway, we did have a conversation, by the way, at the, they had a conversation at the Select Board Member meeting on Monday night. I happened to attend, not expecting that they were going to bring it up. And the town is a little nervous about this hybrid approach, mostly because they don't have the staff really to do it. I mean, there's time staff and there's a number of issues, but we're working that out, and at least for this meeting, we're trying it out, and so far it's good. Do I need to admit somebody? Okay, admit. Yep, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Yeah, I just admitted them, so I would expect them to join in a second, yep. And so, yes, okay. We have someone connecting, okay. So anyway, that's where we are with that hearings. The first item on our agenda is the A and R for Tuckerman Road. Bill will be presenting here in place of Jer, so if you would just state your name for the record and start telling us what it is you want to do with this A and R.
I'm William J. Clayball of 199 Tuckerman Road, Allen, sunny North Ashford, Hamlet, Sunset Lake. This is original, almost a six acre parcel, pie shaped, from north to south, starting with Tuckerman Road and going down Sunset Lake, the shoreline. It was our intent to take our original acre and a half, which is in the northwest section next to Dennis Lawrence, and extend that property following the, the existence of the stone walls down to the shoreline, creating an almost two acre parcel. The other part of this project would create a 3.87 acre parcel that borders our neighbors to the east and take that down, pie shaped, to the, to the shoreline. There were two considerations that needed to be put in. I had Jamie Rowe put in for us. One was roughly a 15 by 70 foot easement here for our, the drainage from our home and our garage, just because it spills out about right there. And I thought that would be less of a problem for neighbors in the future. The other thing was to take some borders that, that were complicated by the introduction of the lake all those years ago. It took the east side of the cove, and our property actually is extended on to the shore there. And I thought that was a little sketchy. I know that people have tried to exchange in the, in the past. And when I say exchange, our neighbors have land over here in the southwest corner that actually is their land, but it's up on this property where we live. So we proposed an exchange and we split the cove. And I think our neighbors are happy about that, and we're happy to clean this up. So we're trying to clean this property up for the benefit of anyone who may be purchasing it and living on it in the future. It seemed, it seemed logical.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Roger? Richard? I mean, we've all had a chance to look through your application, so we, if there's no questions, that's a good thing. Yes, it seems rather straightforward and clear. I, it seems to me that there's plenty of frontage. You have appropriate frontage, that there's appropriate access. Are there any wetlands on the?
There is a seasonal brook that drains from Mr. Feen's land, land across. Across in this property is land owned by Mr. Feen, Bob Feen, and land to the west of that, that is under conservatorship, so this seasonal brook comes down and parallels the driveway down to this flag lot.
Okay.
Which our neighbors know.
So it doesn't necessarily obstruct development or future building or anything else?
You might have a 100 foot setback from that.
Yeah, something like that, okay, good. And it has adequate acreage. So I have no questions. Roger, do you have any thoughts?
No, I don't, I didn't, didn't see any issues with it, but then again, I'm probably, you're in Far Hills, right, Bill, Jane?
Yeah. Oh, you mean, are we attached to there?
Are we part of, are you part of the association?
We're not part of the association.
No, no.
Okay, then, then that does not make a conflict for me, so, but anyway, I'm, I wouldn't be participating anyway as, as associate, but I didn't see any comments anyway.
We like his comments, anyhow. So, so with that said, do I have an emotion to approve? Okay, Larry's approved it, do I have a second?
Second.
Richard second it. Roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Walt, yes. We only needed three for the quorum, so we can sign off on the MyLars. We'll do it this week and it'll be all set.
Wonderful.
All right. That was painful. Painless.
I won't be able to do it till Tuesday.
Oh yeah, he won't do it, he won't be able to be here till Tuesday, so on Tuesday you should be able to pick it up. Larry and I will try to sign it before we leave, so we'll, we'll be all set. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. The next item on the agenda is just a follow up on the follow up on the inquiry we had, I'm going to turn this around so that you can see that we actually are here in the room.
And I'm here.
So, so here we are in the room, and it was on the property on Hoad, Hoad Avenue. Do we have, I can't see who that is, let's see. Is this Chris?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, and you were the one that asked us the question about Hoad, Hoad Ave?
Correct.
Your property. We have some questions, I think, I have some questions back for you, and then I'll let the others do it. Because we did have it looked at, and the Building Commissioner, Sarah, looked at it as well. And we're not quite sure exactly what it is you're asking for. We under, we could see what had happened on the property in the past coming up to this, but what is the issue with your neighbor?
Okay, they want, they don't yet, but they want a piece. If you look at the map, if you have, do you have it there with you?
Yes.
Okay. So you can see where it was sold off in the sections, and it was registered in the Pittsburgh Registry of Deed, and over in the corner down by the water, I put it in pink, a, a triangle shaped area that they, they want, they want to buy. We're trying to sell that piece of our property, just like the other pieces, to a neighbor on that, that side of our property.
So their current, there's no dispute about who owns what properties?
No.
That was a hard question. So there's not any dispute about that. It's just a question of whether you can take a sliver of your property and sell it to them.
Correct.
It would be, I, as long as your lawyers do it, I think we have to, I mean, I guess we would have to have an A and R in order to define what that sliver is, more specifically than just highlighted marks on your plan. And you'd have to do that and ask for it to be similar to what just the, the Clayballs just did.
Would like a survey of the area that is, wants?
We definitely have to know what is going to become their property. So we have to have that surveyed and
Okay.
Beated out.
Okay.
As long as it, it is not, it will not be a conforming lot.
No, that's not.
Will not be buildable, and that will have to be clear, but there's nothing that says as long as your lot is conforming and remains conforming, then you can sell a sliver of it and say, there, if you were just on the edge of being, you were non-conforming, or you were on the edge of not being, and taking this piece made you non-conforming, that could not happen. Have I said that right, Roger?
I think, what's the, the area of the current lot that?
Current lot is remaining lot, well, no, the current lot is what, 42,000 square feet?
And what's the requirement is? Is 60? For the, is it RB and if we be 60? So I think, I think you're in the same process you did in 1989. Needing a variance for the lot size and, and in conjunction with an A and R.
What is an A and R?
An A and R is approval not required. In other words, you basically, you know, the reason why it has to come to us is because we have to validate that what you're doing is not breaking other bylaws or other rules, like subdivision rules or so forth, and you're trying to divide your lot appropriately. That's just what the Clayballs just did. They changed the layout of their lots, so they didn't have to. So, and but, and then because it's under the amount of square, square footage, you have to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. So once you get a, once you divide it from an A and R standpoint and, and do that, then it's a matter of going to the zoning board of appeals and asking them for a variance that allows you to sell this non-conforming piece of your lot. Is that correct, Roger?
Yes, and it's, if you were going in the other direction, if you were buying 1,000 square feet from them and increasing your lot size, that wouldn't be an issue because you were essentially, in its reverse language, decreasing the non-conformity. Or in this case, what you want to do is you're making it more non-conforming by reducing its size. But I think, I think it's the same process you did in 1989 with the variance and the, and the site plan.
And it does not appear to me to be controversial or anything that you would get pushed back on. This is, I can't promise you anything because I don't know what, I, I'm not the most experienced person on these boards, but frankly, just wanting to, to sell a sliver of your lot, you know, for what, for whatever reasons you have for doing that should not be complicated. When you first explained it to me, and I think the thing that had us all sort of wondering exactly what you were doing was I, we, I, I thought you'd said something about how your neighbor would sue you or something like that, or was talking to me.
He is suing us. He wants to, he wants to take it by force.
Oh, I see.
And so I'm hoping, because I've already shown that I've sold it to three other people when they requested it, I'm hoping that I can present to the judge that if I get approval from you, that rather than go through all the court costs, I'm going to propose to him, why don't you buy it? Instead of trying to come after it with force and sue us and try to take it.
What is his claim? What is he, his reasoning?
If you look at the map, if you look at the map, the place where we sold the portion of the A with, where Mr. Fontaine had the garage on our property, our neighbor's daughter has bought that property and has no water access. And so they are trying to tack on, Mr. Fontaine has lived there since, or his family has lived there since 1940. And they are tacking on and saying adverse possession or prescriptive easement and coming in trying to force that issue.
Well, yeah, and, and that dispute has to really be between your lawyers and their lawyers.
Yeah.
Right, and, and we're in that process.
Just in, in looking at that drawing, there's lots of older deeds and older lot lines and right of ways. Is any of that giving them right to, and others essentially passage over that property that was?
There is, no, there is no right of way on that side of our property.
Okay.
So, so the, the, the petition I'm presenting to you is that if I get an A and R from you, I can present it to our lawyer before we end up going into a court and deciding that we're in the discovery process, going back and forth. If they are, will settle out of court, we think we have a good, strong case. But we, we, if we could get an A and R, his presentation to us was that you would never allow it to happen. And I said, well, I've already done it three times. And I've already, I've already done it for other people. I'm doing this for several reasons, but I don't want my money going into court costs if I don't have to.
The, the A and R is simple. It's, then the next step is you're literally going to the zoning board and saying,
Hey, we need a variance for, same thing you did before. Right.
It's too small of a lot, it's not buildable. I would ask you to, I mean, we've had conversations with the Building Commissioner, we want you to be sure that you put on your, on that lot, not a buildable lot. I mean, it's obviously not buildable. So you would just say, this is not a buildable lot, it's non-conforming. You're going for a variance, saying, I want to be able to sell this sliver of a lot to, to another, to someone else. They can have access to the lake.
Right, they want to be able to put up a dock and be able to put a boat there and use the lake. And that right now they can't. I mean, they can, they can, but that's another issue. They want, they want our property to do it with.
Yeah, yeah. So, so yes, you'd have to essentially do what you did back in 89, so.
Okay, so.
Possibly grant them an easement.
Well, that, we, I, we don't want an easement. We have the liability with an easement.
Yeah.
And, and we don't want that. And, you know, so we're trying to let them know when he said that it's not possible that he cannot buy it, that I can come back and say it is possible, they have approved, they allowed it. Now you just need to come in with the right price. And that way I'm protected from having to go to court. And, and I don't have to put, we've already paid thousands of dollars to get this far. And, you know, I'm hoping that he understands that it's better to just use his money to just towards a purchase price.
Purchase, or, or to do what you need to do for this step, that's.
Right, you know, to, you know, so he can just own it, and then that way, you know, he'll have it for generations in his family, whatever, who, who owns it, and it's not, it's not going to tie us up with an easement for our generations of our children and everything to be handed down to them to keep disputing over. So.
So that'd be the process that you go through, and you could just go to Heather and file the application for an A and R. And you will have to have a, you know, a plan that is been, you know, properly, you know, surveyed in order so that you can be very prescriptive and define that section that you want to be, you, you want a variance for. And that's it.
Okay, so you don't, you don't fill out the A and R, I fill out an application.
Yeah.
And I.
Exactly, exactly. Heather would do that.
Okay. All right, and then after the zoning board, you know how long it takes to get an answer?
Oh, they'll give it to you that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll give it to you. Yeah, I need to go into the minutes and you'll be able to do it. And then you can basically say to your lawyers, hey, the, the town has agreed that we can take this sliver of land, and we own it still, and we have a variance, you know, to, you know, that gives us sort of, to subdivide it because it's not a conforming lot, but we're selling a non-conforming lot that's not buildable to, and we have, you can go to them and say, we've done the work to create this sliver of land for you to, to buy from us. If you want it, you can buy it. If you want to fight for it, then they'll, they'll do what they want to do, if they don't want. Okay?
I mean, you may, the longest part may be just getting the, the required publication notifications, that takes at least a couple of weeks of advertisement and such. I don't know if this, maybe we talk to Heather, if there's a way to kind of parallel getting a drawing prepared and getting the application in and scheduled.
Okay.
It's pretty, from ours, from the Planning Board standpoint, this is pretty performant. This is, this is not, this is not difficult, or sorry to put you through the town bureaucracy on doing it, but that's, that's just the way you have to do it when you're, you're dividing up land.
Okay, and, and actuality, if they don't want it, and they don't want to do it that way, and for some reason we don't, we could still sell it. Correct?
Yeah. Yeah, once, once you have the variance, and once it's a defined lot and the town has accepted it as a defined lot that's been granted a variance, it's yours to do whatever you want with it. In fact, you could do nothing with it and just keep it like it is if you wanted to, and it would just define in that corner.
Right. Now, are you, are you the board that I go to to ask you about building a garage or a carport or adding an addition and all of that onto our house?
You would go to the Building Commissioner. If you want to build something on your lot, you would go to the Building Commissioner, and the Building Commissioner would advise you, you know, as to what you can do. And if you needed some variance in order to build it to the lot, then she would give you the, she would advise you on that matter. But essentially, you would have to have some plans, some, you know, that you would take to her and say, we want to do this. You know, some could be done by an architect, or it can be sketched out by a, you know, a contractor, but she has to know what it is you're going to build, and then she would look at the zoning bylaws and how, and the things that apply to your particular lot and tell you whether you can do it or not. And if you need a variance, you would have to go to the, and get a variance. But you, you might not.
Yeah, to set up an appointment, talk to her, just to, you know, essentially a napkin sketch of what you want to do, just to begin the conversation.
Okay.
You need more for the building permit such, but just to, just to be able to convey to her what your intention.
Okay.
Sarah, Sarah is very good, and she's very accommodating, and she, she'll, she'll give you the advice that you need, send you in the direction that you need to go for something like that.
Okay, well, thank you very, very much for your counsel.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, administrative matters. Unfortunately, we lost Jen because she could only stay here till seven o'clock, and so we lost her in this conversation. But the next item was MRPC Planning Assistance Grant Update. I just wanted to let you know, it's my understa, that the last email I saw, the Select Board informed Karen Chapman of their desire to apply for the Planning Assistance Grant to update the master plan. And in that, it's focusing on the missing sections like in facilities and land use and cultural areas. Technically, I think the Planning Board usually applies for these grants, but in this case, the Select Board had, you know, Brian, in my understanding is Brian took care of it. I saw a draft, Rosemary sent me a draft this, this evening, but she doesn't, she assumes he filed for it on time, but it is, I, she could not confirm that, so I will confirm that for the next meeting. But another grant has been filed in our name with the PMRPC in order to update the town's master plan, sections that we don't normally have. The second item I had on the agenda under administrative was Wetlands Bylaw Amendment Follow Up. What happened is, is we, I'm going to ask Roger to sort of guide us through what's the remaining issues, but what came up is the town is having a special town meeting in two weeks. We just found out about it over the weekend. And the question came up, well, if they're having another special town meeting, why don't we put forth that bylaw change that we missed on the last town meeting? And in order for us to have done that, we would have had to have a decision made, or we would have had it all ready to go and approved by Deb Phillips by Monday night, because Monday night is when they voted on the agenda for that town meeting. So we missed another town meeting. So our goal right now, and why Jen was joining us tonight, and why, and Roger's going to talk about is, we are almost there, we've got the thing written, but there are some issues still that have to be ironed out with the zoning map. So I introduced that appropriately for you, Roger. You're on mute.
Thank you, Walt. Yeah, that, that summarizes it. Jennifer had sent, the last clarification we had was one thing with Marshall about stormwater drainage, and we wanted to reword it, so it was a little clearer of what the intent was, and that's what Jennifer sent, I think, this week a, a draft of that modified language. So that's, I think, the last thing as far as the text goes, that needs to be decided upon. And then it can go to Town Council for review and comment. And with the zoning map, we left off the last edited draft was showing the, what was the W District being designated blending with the remaining light industrial B, and that's the way we left the map. There's been discussion back and forth about it, but where I left off was that area was designated LIB. And Richard, may, you may know if you were on that committee that, that came up with that. What what their intent was is just a matter of finding the records of that committee and what their intent was. Because there are significant differences in the uses allowed. Between LIB and RB and as a planning board. Should be careful consideration about what the uses are if we. Um, if it was intended to be LIB exclusive of what was the W District and now we've. Uh, and part of this bylaw change is to clarify and reduce, remove the conflicts between. Uh, with the wetlands bylaws, then. Um, the wetlands bylaws would apply to anything that's related to rivers or streams and wetlands. And the remaining land would be under the LIB, which I. That is my thinking. Where we left off. Um, I don't know if you know anything more, Richard, or where those records would be.
I I don't, I don't know that much about any of that because. And I'm still tied up with them on on Maple with my property.
Yeah. I I spoke with. I think Mark Carlisle, who was on the, the committee at the time, and is his understanding that it was, you know, intended to be LIB in that whole area. And I would just say members to carefully review each of the, the uses allowed between the. The W. Former W and the LIB or RB and and see what's appropriate. In the overall. Plan for the town, but I just couldn't find. The uh, let's say the, the, where it was written in stone as to what that would be so that. Anyone presenting this at town meeting would be able to have an answer for anyone's questions as to.
Mark Carlisle couldn't answer that question for you?
No, that was his thought was that it was intended to be all industrial except the wetlands, but I'd say I just wanted to have. Um, the proof. Just to have on hand, was anyone presenting this at town meeting and the question comes up? And it's much easier and goes much more successful if you have the answer on hand.
No, I I don't and I know Steve Coswell, which is on our committee now, was on that same committee at the time, so maybe he. Has some knowledge too.
And and I would suggest that he. Have the opportunity to review the bylaw.
Yeah.
Because he wasn't on the board when it was prepared, but will be.
Yep.
Going forward, so um. You may have some great insight on that too. But at that point, other than that, it's ready to go to town council for review. I think that and. Specifically have her look at that language that we're trying to revise and see if she agrees or disagrees that it needs to be clarified.
So, so the steps basically are to take care of that, to get the map squared away. Once we got that language, we give, uh, give the whole thing to Deb Phillips. Deb Phillips then does her thing and reviews it and then they put it in the can and wait for the next special town meeting.
Right, I, I would say if the language is set, send it to Debbie.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to see the zoning map.
Yeah.
We change it, we change it. That's a simple, you know, thing, but I wouldn't wait for that.
Yeah.
Before sending it to her. And if there's another special time meeting before the six months are up from the last hearing, you're all set otherwise.
Otherwise, we're going to have to have another public here, okay?
Which you may do anyway, if you have any other.
Yeah, yeah, that depends on that, okay?
Again, it's important to get it as soon as possible so that, because it's removing conflicts that created problems for the town. And property owners.
Yes. No, I should, you know, I, I. We'll see, but it's, it's a good, it's, it's taking away some of the bureaucracy, so that's probably a good thing.
Yes, the sooner the better.
Yeah, all right, uh, and we can touch base with Jennifer tomorrow and, you know, tell her what we discussed and 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 make sure we're. Just, I just want to finalize the wording so that we can send it to Deb. Uh, next thing was the member reports for other boards and committees, uh, anything from economic development?
I was unable to make the meeting last night because I was in transit down here.
Okay, uh, I have nothing to report for MRT. Uh, and nor the bylaw review. Things are just moving along as normal on bylaw review. And MRT meeting hasn't, uh, committee has not met since then. Uh, anything on complete streets, Larry? Nothing on complete streets, other than the fact that I've heard that come the fourteenth on Monday, they're going to start construction. So.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Put the sidewalks in and, you know, some lines and trees and that was reported at the uh, um. That was reported in the um, um, select board meeting the other night. The uh, and Roger, anything on MTJC or MRPC?
Yes, um. I'll start with the. Capital Planning Committee is meeting Monday, joint meeting with, I think, the advisory board. On any items that are on the, the town warrant. Just said, asked Mary to confirm what my status was because as, as the representative, whether it continues to the end of the. To its termination or does it, did it get interrupted by my term on the board ending, so um. But if they have a quorum, that's not an issue. Um, as far as MRPC. Uh, we had meeting last week, um. A lot of discussion on um, employees and staffing, there's promotions. Merit raises and such, um, but we didn't, we didn't go through the status reports, uh, even though I can send you what was written up. Um, so I didn't get a stat update on how they're progressing on the um, the three. DLTA grants we got for the current year. As far as MJTC, there was a meeting today. I was able to listen in by phone over most of it. Um, it was. It would have been very nice to have been. Attending in person on that one, but uh, there are some other grants that they were talking about and I'll, I'll track down that information and forward it to you. Uh, that might be of interest to the town. It also was a demonstration of a, of an app they've written for their um, accessibility evaluations and sidewalks and such. So um, I will try to get that also and and reach out to um. DPW, do you see if they're interested in, in looking at it also? But when they do, they do evaluations, ADA evaluations for towns, and I think this is a useful survey tool. But uh, at least we'll get the, the demo video and. Uh, evaluate it. I didn't hear anything about the, the tip and where our one oh one project stands. Um, I think the last I reported on that was. DOT or Mass Highway was anticipating a late June public presentation. So um, just keep an eye out for that. It's uh, the ones in the recent past have been remote. Webinar type things and, you know, less than an hour and informative, so uh, if that comes forward, I'll let you know.
Okay. Any other committees that I've forgotten? I think, I think I've covered them all. In terms of town notices and announcements, I have just one here. Uh, City of Gardner zoning boarding of appeals is having a, a uh, um. Meeting notice that is for June fifteenth at six o'clock. Uh, it's really about, um, it's more of an administrative meeting about the use of videos and audio recordings. Of their open sessions of meetings and how they are processed. Uh, it's uh, more an administrative meeting than anything, but this notice has come to us. Um, the um. Uh, I'm going to actually ask Heather, uh, that when we have these notices, just put them in a PDF. Because it's easier for me to send them all around to you so that you can read them yourself, if you have an interest in that, but. Uh, I'll still make note of them at the meetings under this section. Um, we did get the minutes this afternoon, the draft of the minutes from Lindsay this afternoon. Um, I would like to postpone that and make a motion to defer approval of those minutes until the next meeting. Uh, the approval of the May twenty six mi- uh, meeting minutes at the next meeting. The reason why is there's a couple of things I'd like. She did not, there are a couple of conversations we had in there that I took notes about that she didn't include. That I would like to have in those minutes. Particularly since they were part of my conversation with the Select Board on Monday night. And I saw, I, I said that we, the board. Deci- decided that we were going to try this hybrid approach at that least last, uh, last meeting. But she didn't put them in the minutes, so I think I want to have that recorded in the minutes. Uh, so I'm going to uh, propose some edits to her and then we'll, uh, we'll approve them at the next minute, so. Um, I'm um, unless there's any objection to that, um, we'll just defer it and consider the minutes at the next meeting. Uh, next meeting, uh, meetings is Wednesday, June twenty third, and the one after that is July fourteenth. We only have one meeting in July. And um, you'll be back for the next meeting, Richard, on the twenty third?
Yes, yes.
But will you be back in North Carolina for the fourteenth?
I don't know, I might, Joe's coming up there, so I don't know where we might be up there, but yeah, we'll, we'll be somewhere in the neighborhood.
Okay, good. Um, and uh. Does anyone else have any? Thing to say? Let's see, shaking, no. You're fine, Roger. You're fine, Larry?
I'm good.
I'll like entertain, happily entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll take it.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any conversations? Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good enough. Thank you, Roger, for your extra research.
Good job, Walt.
On some of these other things and uh. I'm learning. You all take care. Yep, bye bye.
Good night.
Good night.